Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. The Committee on General Government Operations, appropriation of housing convenes this public hearing. Public hearing notice was given to the committee here and set testimony both oral and written on the following bill. Bill 151-35, authored by Senator Clint Rigel, an act to create a new Chapter Two to Title Twelve Guam Code Annotated relative to salary adjustment for employees appointed by board commissions of autonomous agencies of the government of Guam. I'd like to recognize my colleagues that have joined me today, I have Senator Clint Rigel, the author of the bill, and Senator Telo Titegwe, the minority leader. General rules for the conduct of this public hearing. The conduct of this public hearing shall be as follows. Those testifying will recognize the order of sign-in on the sign-in sheet. I know I do have Mr. Leon Guerrero as the second, but he agrees to be the last to speak. Written testimony may be read. Lengthy written testimony should be summarized to about five minutes, but we cannot go beyond the five minutes if needed. Written testimony shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide our legislative staff with your written testimony for photocopying. Testimony shall be confined to the substance, which is on Bill 151. Individuals will be allowed to present all testimony only once. Once you're done, you may be asked to remain in the room for questions or for additional testimony, as may be desired by the members of the panel. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for this proceedings. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form and decorum may be restricted from providing oral testimony and/or may be asked to leave or be escorted from the room. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on, that you speak into the microphone, and you will state your name. I would ask Senator Bob Klitschke to please come forward, sir. Mr. Ken Leon Guerrero, Mr. Ray Tapasna, and Mr. Dave John. So I'll have a seat. And we will begin first by allowing the author of the bill to give his opening statement. Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and my colleagues, for the opportunity to speak on Bill 151-35. The genesis of this bill came after news broke of the Consolidated Commission on Utilities giving illegal closed-door raises to the upper management of the utilities. After that news came out, former Senator Robert Klitschke gave me a call and recommended that I consider legislation that would create more transparency on boards and commissions. Klitschke even emailed Proposed Language. We took a look at it, and that's essentially how this bill came about. So this bill is a product of those discussions with Senator Klitschke, and I'd like to thank him very much for your assistance with this bill and for actually writing the bill. I appreciate it. This bill will require all salary adjustments made by boards and commissions to lay before the legislature for 90 days before implementation. The 90-day window will allow respective legislative oversight committees and our senators to properly assess the raises. This way, we can ensure that all measures of transparency and accountability have taken place, and that the people have ample time to discuss the merit of these raises. The bill also requires that when certificates of the chair are transmitted to the legislature, that the board chair declare that all proper procedures were followed. A salary adjustment must be discussed in a properly called and public meeting. A quorum must be present, and minutes must be recorded. The chair of the board or commission declares under penalty perjury that they are compliant with all aspects of this law. The bill seeks to prevent any future incidents where boards, such as the CCU, feign ignorance to the law. We must hold our government fiscally accountable. In the wake of Attorney General's lawsuit against closed-door meetings of the CCU, I hope that this bill will assist in facilitating an honest and open government for the people of Guam and continued communication between boards or commissions and the legislature. Thank you once again, Mr. Chair. I look forward to listening to public comment on this bill.
Thank you, Senator. We will begin with Senator Klitschke, and then followed by Mr. Ray Tapasna, and then David John, and then Mr. Ken Leon Guerrero. He has some slides to present. Sir, Senator Klitschke.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Honorable Chairman Joe S. Augustine and members of the Committee on General Government Operations, et cetera, prompt adoption of Bill 151 would be beneficial to all boards and commissions that deal with salaries. A peek through the retrospectoscope shows that had this law been on the books five years ago, it would have saved several citizens grief, embarrassment, and the harsh embrace of the law. Bill 151-35 provides a much-needed self-actuating oversight dimension to an important activity increases. First, ensuring that the requirements of the open government law have been met. Second, providing a 90-day lay-before period for public and legislative review. During the 90-day lay-before period, the legislature may pursue several options to include: one, passing appropriate legislation; two, holding an oversight hearing; three, scheduling a roundtable discussion; four, engaging in benign neglect, which is something I think perhaps this body is well-equipped to undertake. Sections Two and Three of 151 are at best superfluous concerning Section Two, which is the effective date section; One GCA, Section 102, effective date of statutes. Every law enacted by the legislature shall go into effect at midnight of the day of its approval by the governor unless otherwise provided therein. And then 102A and B address how a bill becomes law when the governor doesn't act on it for 10 days or when a veto is overridden. So unless you're going to provide for something other than immediate effectiveness of the bill, there's no need for an effective date clause. Section Three could be counterproductive. Consider, Section Three is a severability clause. Consider instead an inseverability clause, which would read, "This act is to be construed as a whole, and all parts of it are to be read and construed together. If any part of this act shall be adjudged by any court of competent jurisdiction to be invalid, the remainder of this act shall be invalidated." Bill 151 is an integrated approach addressing the overreach of a commission and noncompliance with the open government law. The whole is greater than the sum of the parts which are synergistic. The severance of any part of the bill renders the entire statutory scheme less effective. The enacting clause set out at Two GCA, Section 2101, which reads, "Be it enacted by the people of Guam," is the only verbiage that must be included in every bill. There is no such requirement for a severability clause, although it seems like everything that comes, even bills with only one section, have a severability clause. Unless a bill could have an impact on individual rights, there probably is no reason to even consider a severability clause. For Bill 151, as discussed above, an inseverability clause is more appropriate. Bill 151 is remedial legislation that would safeguard the public purse while providing a high degree of transparency. Please pass it forthwith. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Mr. Ray Tapasna.
Thank you, Senators. For the record, my name is Ray Tapasna, and I serve as the current Executive Director of GURA. I am here today to oppose the passage of Bill 151-35 in its current form, as it may have unintended consequences for the Housing Authority. For the benefit of some of our first-term members to this body, I see only one Senator, Clint Rigel. GURA could possibly be the most unique of all of the Gov-Guam Autonomous Agencies. Our creation and existence is derived, in some measure, from congressional action. While not a part of the Organic Act as originally enacted in 1950, it has become part of the Organic Act of Guam as contained in Title 48 of the United States Code Annotated since November 1963 with passage of Public Law 88-171. The Guam Legislature, prior to enactment of the foregoing federal law, established GURA with the passage of Public Law 6-135 in December 1962, now codified as 12GCA, Chapter Five of our enabling legislation. By doing so, Congress gave its official sanction to the powers that the legislature had bestowed upon GURA through its enabling legislation. With these broad powers derived from congressional action and our enabling legislation, GURA appreciates and respects our complete autonomy. This autonomy is likely the result of the legislature recognizing the stringent federal requirements GURA must adhere to as a result of being 100% federally funded. Again, to be clear, what makes us unique from all others who receive federal funding is that our management and operations are also highly regulated by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. As well, GURA's personnel records are audited annually as mandated by HUD. I don't know of any other Gov-Guam entity where audits or personnel records are actually audited. Upon initial review of the bill, I have the following concerns. Bill 151-35 may restrict our autonomy. As noted above, our enabling legislation gives our Board of Commissioners broad authority to operate efficiently to meet the mandates of HUD, our mission and organizational goals to service low-to-moderate-income family housing. As stated earlier, all of our programs and projects are governed by stringent federal rules and regulations. HUD's attorney has even recently advised our board and management that the Hatch Act, not necessarily the Mini-Hatch Act, applies to all GURA personnel. Bill 151-35 may restrict budgetary authority over GURA, requiring the filing of proposed certificate of the chair to be laid before the legislature for 90 days before any adjustment for employees of autonomous agencies, may place us in a precarious position, as any unspent funds at the end of the year may be recaptured by HUD. A recapture of these funds may also mean a reduction of subsequent fiscal year allotments. When I took the helm at GURA in January of 2019, HUD threatened to recapture $2.7 million in our Section Eight program alone because GURA had been tracking to not spend these funds over two consecutive years. We immediately implemented corrective action measures and obligated the expenditure of these funds before it was lost. It appears that the intent of the bill is to prevent the missteps of our particular commission. However, the language as written may exclude them. Perhaps the language needs to be clear that elected boards are included. In the spirit of transparency, I hereby submit a response to Senator Clint Rigel's letter dated February 25, 2020. The documents requested include: a) knowledge of and compliance with Article Two of Chapter Forty-Three, Title Five GCA; and b) copies of recent performance evaluations of agency heads. And I have it here today. By the way, our performance evaluations are on GURA's website as well. In closing, I'd like to remind the body that improprieties at GURA will be dealt with by HUD, referring the matter to federal investigators, as we've seen in recent years. Additional oversight isn't necessary at GURA. It will only serve to be more counterproductive. I'd like to thank this committee for allowing me the opportunity to testify on this bill. While we support its intent, we believe the bill needs to be amended to address all of our affirmation concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. David John.
Good afternoon, members of the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Maritime Transportation, Power, Energy, Utility, and Emergency Response. For the record, my name is David John. I'm a chairman, current chairman, of the Guam Economic Development Authority. I'd like to thank you. My comments will be brief, but I wanted to be here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 151-35. I'm supportive of the intent of the bill to increase transparency in the process for which boards and commissions approve a salary adjustment for employees of autonomous agencies who are appointed by the boards. During my tenure as chairman of the GIDA board, we have not approved any salary adjustments for our CEO/administrator to date. I've been a member of this GIDA board for several years, and from what I can recall, if we approve a salary adjustment for the administrator, we have done so in public meetings with public notices published according to open laws. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Leon Guerrero, and I know you have some slides. Can you make sure that they're ready?
Could you bring it up to the blank slide? Okay, that's good, right there. My name is Ken Leon Guerrero with Guam Citizens for Public Accountability, testifying in support of passage of Bill 151. There's a very strong perception in the public that politicians are more concerned about their personal financial security than the financial security of the people who elect them. The massive retroactive pay raises passed in secret by the 32nd legislature are why the people feel that way, and the continuing examples of politicians helping politicians we see in the form of closed-door, poorly noticed meetings by different boards and commissions that perpetuate these beliefs. Bill 151 is badly-needed legislation that should be passed as a way to begin the process of restoring trust in our government. We've seen too many instances on boards and commissions where appointees give raises to management, many of whom are former politicians. I have already submitted a petition to Senator Jose Tralahi on one case that he forwarded to the Attorney General's office on the Mayor's Council of Guam. The attachments are in my testimony. Next slide. This bill came about as a result of the CUC meetings, where we saw pay raises across the board averaging $25,000 that were passed in secret. Now, I testified against these raises after the fact, because it's a matter of proportion. We have a small utility agency with 51,000 customers, but we're paying mainland prices for the management of these utilities. Utilities that have no competition, very small customer base, yet we're paying them the same amount of money as we're paying utility companies that have millions of customers and compete with, you know, Fortune 500 utility companies. So we need to, the reason why we need this bill is so that we have perspective. Next slide. Now, in the current situation, we have a lot of abuse, starting with the Port Authority of Guam. Next slide. Joanne Brown started at $101,000, and when she, after eight years, she left at $169,000. Actually, it should be six years. She left at $169,000. Next slide. Roy Respecio, with no experience whatsoever, starts at $169,000. And if the current board raise approval process continues, by the time his term is up, he'll be paid almost $300,000 a year. Next slide. So here we're looking at the two examples. After six years of service, and in Joanne Brown's case, there were performance evaluations done as required by law. In Roy Respecio's case, there was nothing. He walked in, and on day one, he walked in at $169,000. So where, at the rate we're going right now, from this point forward, if we take everybody up to the max and start the next manager at the max, we're going to have people making half a million dollars running different autonomous agencies and departments here on Guam. Next slide. This is the deputy manager of the port who started, I believe, at, hold on a second here. I can't read that up there. Yeah, he started at 101,000, and on day one, Sinahara started at $134,000. Now, he had five performance evaluations under his belt at the time he retired, and here she is, starting on day one, at $134,000. Next slide. Rick Augustine is special, and I'll tell you why he's special. Because he got a $10,000, no, pardon me, a $12,000 pay raise two weeks after he was hired for the position. And at the board meeting where they gave him the pay raise, he announced to the board that Guam Regional Transit Authority is $700,000 short in our revenue. And they gave him, I think it was actually more of an $18,000 raise. He went from 13, 75, to 88. On the same day that he reported to the board, they were short over half a million dollars. And when I went to the board, because I remembered I attended that board meeting, so I went to get a copy of the minutes. And, next slide. And the board tells me, oh, the minutes are missing. We can't find the minutes where we gave him the raise. But we have the resolution that came from the minutes. Next slide. So here we have the resolution that came from the minutes authorizing his pay raise from 75,000 to 88,000, but we don't have the minutes from the meeting. And then, next slide. Self-about-to-starts, and instead of starting at the lower salary, step one for the position, he starts right at the top at $88,000. Next slide. This one's another special. This is the one I referred to, Jose Tralahi, Mayor's Council of Guam. On February 19th board meeting, he told the board members, he just read in the newspaper that he's the lowest-paid executive director of government of Guam, and he wants a raise. And the board gave him a $22,000 pay raise just because he was the lowest-paid member. So now he's making $100,000 a year, and in his position, next slide. You can see here, this is where he started at 46, next slide, jumps to 63, 65, pardon me, next slide, and then, oh, we overshot. All right, hold there. But in the long and short of it is, he went, he got a $53,000 pay raise in four years. There is no change in the job description, no change in duties assigned, no performance evaluations. The raises were never noticed. They were all held in the equivalent of an executive session. Because if any of you attended a meeting of the Mayor's Council, you know they do their mayor's business first before they bring anybody in. So the fact that they're doing it behind closed doors without letting the public in that, for all intents and purposes, was an executive session. Next slide. So now here we are in a situation where the Attorney General is finally acting. The managers are getting their raises and bonuses. Next slide. Public steps in, once we found out about it, and the raises were rescinded. That's the importance of Bill 151 that interrupts, because if the public had not learned about this through a Freedom of Information Act, we never would have known. Next slide. And now here we are, as a result of the Freedom of Information Act and a legal challenge to the board, that pay raises were rolled back, and now the Attorney General is stepping in. Now, the reason the Attorney General's stepping in is because even though they rolled the raises back, they had another board meeting in public where they're retroactively approving the raises so that the management team involved doesn't have to pay the money back. So this goes back to my earlier point. Right now, we have a manager of a water system that loses 60% of the water that's pumped out of the ground at taxpayer expense, and we're giving him a $20,000 pay raise for that wonderful job. We have another manager that's making the same amount of money as the executive director of Sacramento Municipal Utility District, SMUD, that has over a million customers and competes with PG&E, another Northern California Electrical Cooperative, and NV Energy, which is a top 500 Fortune company owned by Berkshire Hathaway. But here, our manager has no competition. So why are we paying him the same amount of money that we're paying a guy that's managing a utility system that has over a million customers? Now, I know three other utility systems that we're paying, I mean, that are paying their general managers the same as we are, but they have millions of customers and they have a lot of competition. So there's a disconnect here. That's why Bill 151 is needed. I was at a board meeting at the Port Authority where one of the board members wanted to raise the salaries of the crane operators to $120,000 to match Los Angeles. Now, let's think about this for a second. The crane operators in Los Angeles are moving between 200 and 300 cans a day. The crane operators here in Guam are lucky if they move 200 cans a week. But this is what's happening in these boards and commissions when we get to issues of pay, and that's why we need to have this bill pass. Next slide. Here's another instance where we have a situation here. This is, I apologize, because I can't read my own, I can't read it from up here down here, so let me go back. Next slide. Okay, here we have Tom Ada. The previous board, the previous general manager at the airport, after eight years, went from $90,000 to $143,000, and then Tom Ada started at $143,000 and gave himself a pay raise within the first month to $154,000. So here we have a situation where the board approved, probably in an executive session. And I say in an executive session because we don't know, because when, another area that needs to be closed on the open government law is when boards put out their agendas to the public. They need to put a little more detail, because the traditional board notices like this. Agenda, opening, roll call, approval of minutes, old business, new business, public comment. Those needing assistance, please contact this number. There's not any information put in these notices. And if we're going to strengthen the over-government law, they have to put the real agenda in, not just that boilerplate agenda. Because I guarantee you, if you put a notice out there that says, "Old business, number one, $50,000 pay raise to executive director," there are going to be a lot more people paying attention to what these boards and commissions are doing, because that's money coming out of our pocket. And when it's happening behind closed doors, and I'm going to detour here, since I've got all this time. Guam Memorial Hospital is another example. For the first year of the administration, we were paying almost $600,000 for executive management at Guam Memorial Hospital with the board approval. We're paying the same amount of money as Queens Medical Center was paying their CEO. Now, the difference is Guam Memorial has 153 beds and 41 doctors on staff. Queens Medical Center has nine facilities around the state, 1,000 doctors on staff. And yet, for the first seven or eight months of 2019, we were paying the same amount of money for management with board approval as Queens Medical Center is paying for their management. Next slide. This is another one on Tom Ada. Next slide. Mayor's Council of Guam, we already covered that. Next slide. Here is the famous news story that was the basis for Angel Sublon going to the Mayor's Council and in a matter of minutes getting a $22,000 increase in pay, which also meant a corresponding increase in benefits at the cost to taxpayers. It wasn't noticed, and nobody had a chance to testify against it. Next slide. So here he goes, January, from $21,000 pay raise, next slide, and then a couple of days later, an $11,000 pay raise, next slide. So in just the space of two years, he goes from $22 an hour to $47,000. he goes from $22 an hour to $47 an hour. No job evaluations, no additional duties assigned, and it's all done behind closed sessions. So that's why, contrary to what people believe happens behind closed doors, we need to get that out in front of closed doors, which requires two things. Bill 151 at least puts an intervention loop in. It provides a form where all the public has an opportunity to weigh in on these salary adjustments put forward by boards and commissions and agencies. Because the way they do it right now, the GP, the CCU, they schedule their board meetings at 4 o'clock on a Friday. You know, very inconvenient time. And then you've got the traffic trying to get out to the back road of Anderson. So it's almost by intent. And I'm on their stakeholder list. I get their agendas all the time. Roll call, minute approval. But there's no detail in any of these meetings. So that's something I'd like to see fixed in the open law. As we saw in the recent CUC activity, the boards and commissioners are going to do what they're going to do, and for the most part, ignore public input because they never solicit any. There's an important principle embedded in the Declaration of Independence that outlines the concept of consent of the governed. Only when the public is fully informed can we be involved in the governing process, and that's why I support Bill 151. By having the elected representatives sitting here in the People's House reviewing the raises given by boards and commissions, often in secret, intentionally or unintentionally, or through obfuscation, you serve as a safety valve to ensure that the raises given are appropriate and merited and with fully disclosed public hearings to ensure transparency and give members of the public an opportunity to weigh in before the raises are finalized and avoiding the fiasco like we're seeing with the CCU that are going through, going into litigation as a result of public outcry. If there hadn't been substantial outcry from the public over the CCU raises, I doubt very much the Attorney General would be bringing the action that he is bringing today. Public officials have a lot of work ahead of them to restore the public's trust. Passage of Bill 151 will be a good first step. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to also recognize my colleague that has joined us, Senator Kelly Marsh-Tightno. Senator Tightno, do you have any questions at this time? Or I can come back to you.
Do you want me to come back to you, Kelly? Come back to you.
Senator Tello? Do you have any questions? There's only the four of us and four of them, so we're good.
Sujus Massey, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, gentlemen. Thank you for being here. It's a very impressive panel I'm looking at right now on the comments. So Senator Klitsky, the comments that were made by GURA regarding federal circumstances and their position that they're in, I mean, personally, I don't see an issue adding that layer on top of it. I think that if a law like this were passed, clearly, they would have to adjust their schedules when it comes to any implementation of salary increases or anything like that, that have to go through the process if this bill were to pass to the legislature. So I just want to hear your two cents on this for the federal side. And turn on the mic. Yeah, please.
Well, without taking a peek at the books, my conclusion is that the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority doesn't want to do it. That's my first inclination. And then, second is, deciding that it doesn't want to do it, they've got to figure out some reasons. So reference to the Organic Act is always a good place to start, regardless of what you find in the Organic Act. The only reason that I could really put my arms around was the fact that GURA sometimes has federal funds that it wants to use before the end of a fiscal year so that they don't go back to the U.S. government. Suggesting that if this bill became law, since it requires that the papers be forwarded to the legislature at least 90 days before the legislature adjourns, sign and die, the only conclusion I can draw is that if they got to the end of a year, of a fiscal year, and they had extra money, they'd want to give salary increases. I may be misreading it, but that's the only conclusion that I could draw from a raised testimony. If that's the case, then I'm, what I would say is, that's exactly why this bill is so necessary.
Mr. Leon Guero, yes, go ahead. Comment?
As we know with federal funds, when they lapse, the federal government does not revoke them immediately. They give the departments and agencies an opportunity to justify. And in the case of an increase in pay of a director, I doubt that the federal government is going to demand that $5,000, $6,000, $7,000, $8,000 when they're looking at $2.5, $3 million or $4 million that has lapsed because of inaction. So I don't see that any of the boards and commissions are going to take two or three years to make a decision on whether or not to approve a pay raise for an executive director. And to the best of my knowledge, there's only two agencies that get their funding from the federal government, which is GIPA and GURA. So in view of the fact that both agencies have held federal funds well in excess of the approved period, I'm thinking even Guam Regional Transit, they had funds 12 years after awarding, and they were still able to apply them. So I don't see that as a legitimate objection to a bill like this that would provide so much more transparency to the commission, to the commission approval process of pay raises. And that's what this really, really needs to happen. Because all these boards and commissions meet, for the most part, behind closed doors. And this is what I mean, behind closed doors. The way the notices are sent out, that's why we have very little attendance at any of the boards and commissions. Because you don't know what's going to be discussed. There's no sense of urgency from the public. But I guarantee you, if CCU had put out a notice that says, "We're going to award the equivalent of $100,000 a year in pay raises to our four top managers," there would have been a lot more people out there other than myself and Mr. Klitsky raising concerns about that.
Okay. And thank you, Mr. Leon Guero. That being said, I was, my next question was to you regarding the bill on any amendments to be made. You pretty much almost answered the question, but if there was an amendment to be made to cover that issue or concern that you have, would you be amenable to having something like that?
I'm fine with the bill the way it is. My only concern is this goes to the open government law, that we work on the open government law to include a requirement that the meeting agenda in total be published. That way, the people of Guam will have a better idea of what topics are going to be discussed in the meetings. I saw the notices coming from CCU on the water rate increase, but not a single one of the notices on the meetings I got as a stakeholder said anything about a water rate increase. All I had, all I get is boilerplate, and I'm sure you guys get them too.
Miller, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I'd like to give Ray from GURA an opportunity to respond to what relates to what the two gentlemen mentioned. Ray, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Senator. I actually worked at the airport for 16 years as the chief planner overseeing federal grants from, primarily from the FAA, TSA, US EPA, Department of, US Department of Commerce, EDA. And as well, at the Housing Authority, we oversee about $69 million annually in HUD grants. What I can say is, every grant has different requirements. Even the, how the grants are managed or the oversight by the federal entities are different. What I've learned at GURA, which is much different from the airport, is the airport receives tens of millions of dollars in federal grants, but they're not highly regulated. In other words, at GURA, we don't just operate and manage those federal grants. We're regulate, our management operations is regulated by HUD. They come out and inspect us annually. So, yeah, it's easy to say, you know, we know federal grants and we know what the regulations are, but they're all different.
I have a simple question. Because the bill refers to, Mr. Tepasno, on reference to salary adjustment for employees appointed by boards. You're appointed by the board.
Correct.
Now, how does, does the board determine or does HUD determine what your pay should be? I'm going to ask that very simple question because I just want to make sure that, because if you can answer that, that I would.
Okay. And I can't speak to the other agencies, but GURA's executive positions follow an executive pay scale, similar to what the remaining 99 employees of GURA. They have a pay scale. We follow the pay scale. The board does not deviate from that pay scale, or at least under the new administration. So there's a pay scale. The board follows that pay scale. We get our annual performance evaluations. In fact, what I'm giving you is the July performance appraisal. And the board is, I believe, is evaluating both the deputy director and myself as I speak. I think we've received two or three performance evaluations so far. So that's why I'm not able to give you the most current. But based on the, on those evaluations is, would determine whether we get a pay adjustment or not. Again, but based on what the pay scale dictates.
Now, where does the funds come for, come from to pay here? If, let's, for example...
From HUD.
From HUD. It's not from the taxpayers of Guam. It's coming from the federal government. It's a different...
Correct.
Pot of money. I just wanted to make sure. And what role does HUD play in your? If the board says, "We evaluate, you're good to go," what role do they play to make sure that it is, in fact, clear?
HUD requires, as part of our annual audit, the audit of all personnel actions, inclusive of my personnel action and my deputy.
Okay. Senator Kelly, do you have any questions you wanted to bring up? Okay, please, feel free.
Sujus Massey, and my apologies for coming here late and missing some of the testimony, but I read through it all and made notes as I was reading through. So I just want to go through a couple of small points and I thank the author of this bill for working towards having a clearer process, one that has more review to it and transparency, and for seeking input from the different agencies that would be affected. It's important to hear from each of them. And I really thank those who came here to testify. I know it takes time. I know it takes effort to come here, to develop the testimony, and to put those perspectives that you thought through forward. So I thank you for that. And when we have something like this, we were at a hearing, I believe it was just yesterday, where some legislation had gone through last term. And it was written in a way that was meant to have, it was written with good intentions, and it was written to have positive consequences, but it did have some unintended consequences that then had to be rectified. So, you know, getting back to the point of it's important to hear all sides, and it's important to hear about possible intended consequences and possible unintended consequences so that when we're weighing this out, we really have tried to look at it from every angle. So I'm noting that in the testimony, there are some that are pointing out that there may be some unintended consequences, but there might be ways to amend it, to keep the intention and avoid some of those unintended consequences. And then, the testimony provided here today about, you know, seeing some examples of why thinking like this is important and necessary. So again, I want to thank everybody for being part of the process. It will provide us the tools that we need to be able to go through this. So, Sujus Massey.
Thank you, Senator Kelly. Senator Tello, you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Senator Klitsky, why 90 days? Why not 60 days? The bill requires 90 days, if I'm not mistaken, 90 days?
Yeah.
But why 90 days and not 60 days?
Well, it could be 90, it could be 91, it could be 89. 40 has a nice ring to it.
But the justification for 90?
It seems that it would be, you know, given, given my experience of hanging around this place, it's about how long it takes things to get done. You know, it comes, it arrives on day one, it gets circulated around to various senators, newspapers cover it, et cetera. And if you want to have some time to do something with it, then you've got three months to deal with it. But it, there isn't anything magic about 90 days. It's just my guesstimate as to the appropriate timeframe. The 90, the 90 days before adjournment, of course, ties into that. And going back to the idea of unintended consequences, if passage of this bill would prohibit an agency from using up unexpended funds at the end of a fiscal year by giving large salary increases, that's not an unintended consequence. That is an intended consequence.
And so you wouldn't have a problem if it went from 90 to 60?
I think it would. I'd have to think about it a little bit, but it doesn't seem to, to, it doesn't seem like it would be a problem.
Change the intent of the bill and what its purpose is. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity again.
Thank you. Senator Clint?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to touch on that 90 days. So I think, in my mind, one of the sort of tie-ins to 90 days is similar to like the AAA process, Administrative Adjudication Act. I believe rules and regulations before they're, they become part of the GAR, they sit before the legislature for 90 days. And the legislature can amend them, can reject them, can... Is that incorrect?
The legislature cannot amend a rule.
Well, I guess can reject or approve or let it lapse, right? So I guess technically why I'm saying amend is the legislature can just introduce a bill that has all the rules and regs in it and then pass that.
That way, you wouldn't have to stop and say, "Wow, was it 90 or 60?" I think, right?
But I believe it's 90 days. And if the legislature doesn't do anything to the rules and regs in 90 days, then it sort of lapses in.
That's right.
So in my mind, that's similar to this, where it sits before us. If we don't do anything in 90 days, then the raises become raises.
Correct.
So that, that's just sort of my, what I'm thinking is the justification for the 90 days, Senator Tightno. With that, I'd just like to thank the chairman for the opportunity to hear the bill today and thank all of you for showing up to testify today. I will, of course, take into consideration all the testimony received today, myself personally. And then it's up to the chairman, of course, how he would like to proceed. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. David John, you signal you wanted to make a comment also, Mr. Tepasno.
Yeah, just add one more thing, just from a different set of eyes. And I was listening to Mr. Leon Guero's presentation. As a board member, I think, you know, most of the boards are trying to do the right thing, right? And I know my board is. We're volunteers. And what I like about this is, you know, something as far as the salary, especially for the directors, it needs to be accountable. But also that 90-day grace period makes sure that there's an opport, kind of a timeout, right? So if we do make a mistake, we can get it resolved before it turns into the examples that Mr. Leon Guero presented. No, I mean, they were good. That made me, just, you know, from a board member, I would like that opportunity to, you know, have that, the 90-day cool period. And if it, if it, if the opinions that what we came up with didn't work, that there'd be some time to get it done before it became a major, you know, a major issue. So that piece of it I liked. I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Mr. Ray, you signal you wanted to make one more comment?
Yeah, one more thing. You know, just for the legislature's information, HUD actually sets salary caps for housing authorities, for a small-size housing authority, medium-size, and a large housing authority. authorities, for a small-size housing authority, medium-size, and a large housing authority, and we're not, we're not even close to that cap. So, I mean, I invite Ken Leon Guero to attend some of our board meetings if he, he might get a new perspective in government transparency.
And you're right, Mr. Ray. Maybe we need to send him a copy of the minutes because I know your, your agenda's always filled. You can't even fly it unless the board approves it. But there is no one else yet. There's no one else to testify. That being said, the committee will conclude the public hearing for Bill 151-35. Committee will continue to receive testimony for the next few days. Mr. Leon Guero, make sure you get a copy of your presentation. Thank you. Please address your in testimony to Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriations, and Housing and submit it via email, senatorjoestenaukstein@gmail.com. Sisus Massey for your attendance and participating in today's hearing serves. And for those at home, thank you for watching. This public hearing for Bill Number 151-35 is now adjourned. It is 2:52. Thank you.